All right, you're ready to go here, Gary? All right, okay. I'd like to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of August 22, 2023, to order, please. Roll call.
Brannick.
Here.
Franklin. Whitwer.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Phelps.
Yep.
McNally.
Here. Is Chuck Franklin here? Is he calling in?
He has not called in as of yet.
All right. All right. If we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tammy, can you assure us of the proof of posting that's been done properly?
Sure, the agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, public comment. You see three people, you're going to be speaking in a little bit. Anybody else? Any comments they would like to share? Seeing none, we will move on. Approval of the consent agenda includes a village board minutes, August 8, Public Works Committee Planning Commission meeting, Water and Sewer.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, one correction. The Water and Sewer Committee meeting, minutes. Item 6C. The voting was incorrect for it. I did not abstain. I voted against the motion. So it says that I abstained, I did not.
Hold on just a second. Six C?
Six C, yep. I was the one that was voting against the motion. So I can abstain.
Got it. In the negative.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I had one issue, but I already gave it to Tammy.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, moving on, President's Report. I wanted to talk today, and I just, just because of the hot weather that we're going to have here for the next two days. And I was going to ask the trustees, are we aware of anybody that might be in jeopardy with hot weather? And do we need to make it known that people can come to the library or to Amundson if they feel the need to?
I personally don't know anybody offhand, and I've not heard in my neighborhood.
Paula, you've heard?
I have not.
Chris, Eric. All right. Because folks could come to the library if they felt that they needed to get out of their houses. I, you know, I saw the paper today, and they're talking 110 degrees, and it's really going to hit tomorrow. So I just, by the time, well, this gets telecast right away tomorrow, right, Gary? So there might be some people listening. And you may get a few phone calls, Tammy, and you know where to direct them with the extreme weather that we're going to have. Okay, Library Board.
Hold on, I have one item, Mark. I noticed that you attended a conference. Can you enlighten us on maybe what it was about and what you learned and?
Sure. I would if I could. But I can't, so I won't. The conference is tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay, great. So what conference are you going to?
This was the League of Municipalities, the annual meeting with the presidents and mayors of communities throughout the state of Wisconsin. I've been going to this for the last five years. And it's, it moves around the state. And you get a chance, and I had planned on, you know, just taking notes, and there probably be three or four sort of items that are of interest. There's a lot of stuff that's covered, it just doesn't apply to a small community. So I will, at the next meeting.
Where's it held this year?
This year, it is held up at the Oustburg.
Hostel. Hostel Resort.
It's up by El Cart Lake.
I could have, I thought it showed that you got reimbursed for mileage, which is why I thought you'd already done it. So I may have misread that. Okay.
Any birthdays at the table?
Well, there is one.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. How young are you?
Young enough to.
This is filmed tomorrow.
Yes, yeah. To want to keep going at it. So that's what I'm doing.
Well.
I had a board meeting this evening, and this took precedence. So I'm here and eager to do business.
Better way to celebrate your birthday with us.
All right. Let's take dinner then. Yes, and no. Okay, anything else? All right. Moving on to the Library Board. Paula?
The library met. I think probably the, we, there's an agenda where we have to change who, who the representatives on the Library Board are. One, because we approved two people at the last meeting. One of them isn't eligible because we needed to bring in somebody from the school. So tonight, there'll be a new one for the school. So we had that picked up. And then I think the other biggest thing is just working with the library and letting them know that we wanted their budget information. So we're starting our budget process for the library to see what we've got there.
Is that for '24? The budget that you're speaking of?
Yeah, it's for next year.
Okay. I didn't know if it was a yearly or bi-yearly.
It's yearly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that's really all we got. Our new, Kerry, the new member, will be at our next Library Board meeting. And then hopefully so will, if we approve the one for tonight, which is later in the agenda.
Questions for Paula? All right. Moving on, Public Works. Mr. Todd Lord, can you come up there? Sit at the table, introduce yourself, and give us an update.
Todd Lord, Department of Public Works Director. We're actually, we actually caught up with our tree, tree thing today. So I'm actually feeling good about that. It took, it took, what, three, four weeks to catch up with that? Well, then again, people trimming other trees down because their limbs were all breaking off and stuff like that. So we finally caught up with that. Now we're going back into normal things that we do. We finally got caught up with cutting grass with that and everything else. So we're back, we're back, for now, we're back into normal.
Can I ask a question about the trees?
What's that?
Can I ask a question about the trees? I saw some of the trees have red paint on the curbs. Has Jay gone around marking trees that he wants to remove?
Jay is out assessing trees right now. Trees that need to come down, and that's, those red marks are probably the ones that either need to come down or need some trimming to the tops of them or something. He's writing up a list right now. He's been working on that for a couple of days. So I haven't seen the full list yet.
Keeping in mind for budget. It's going to impact it.
Well, I haven't seen the list, so I'll be able to give you a good question.
You can ask for things, that doesn't mean you're going to get them.
It's not my committee.
Well, and we, and, and he's able to take down a few here and there, too. Not all trees, but limbs that are an issue. But, you know, within, within reason, you know, safety reasons. But otherwise, it's, it's like Tree Works or somebody like that that's going to be doing that because just, we're not able to climb trees and we're not outfitted for that. Otherwise, we're doing, we're doing pretty good. I'm, I'm going to be, my grading rolls pretty soon. We did, we did, I had the end of Lawn Street at the dead end on the north side of Lawn Street, chip sealed and ashed right along with it because those were roads that were in need of, need of some type of repair.
They redid that intersection, right? The one that was a?
Johnson and.
Duck pond, Johnson and, yeah.
Yes, oh yes, and that's done, and that's done perfect. They, they changed the, they changed the crowning road, that's all they had to do.
Looks nice.
Yeah, they, they had the crown the wrong way. They had the crown on Johnson, and it's supposed to be on Townsend. But, yeah, I worked with MSA with that, and he made sure that we were happy with it. He made sure that we were happy with it before he let them go. So I imagine they'll probably be wanting you to cut a check for that.
So if the crown was incorrectly done by the pavers, who pays for the correction?
The pavers pay for the correction.
Okay.
Yeah, the village does not pay for that. We've actually, I believe we've held money back for that. I'm not, I'm not part of the fund thing, so I don't know, understand that part. But I believe we held money back because MSA told me to tell Lisa to hold money back until they finish their job correctly.
Have you, isn't that the same thing that happened over on Waverly last year?
Waverly, they, they just re-chip sealed that.
Okay.
To, to fix what they, what didn't work. And we actually just got done sweeping that up, too.
Yeah, because that was just a straight up.
And we've been doing, we've been doing a lot of sweeping. We've done enough sweeping where we got to change a brush now.
Oh, wow.
That's, that's, well, there was a lot to do.
There was.
It hadn't been done since, well, last year, the year and a half. You know, they've been having problems with that other sweeper for forever. I mean, they could only do it when it rained because the, the thing wouldn't hold water properly. And it wouldn't spray it out properly either.
So you're all done then with Waverly? They just went down the middle and kind of deposited some?
Yeah, they went, they went down the middle to, to, because all the chip seal came off the top of the, top of the road. And that, that probably had something to do with the rain they had the night, the night, they, that afternoon, they did it, and it rained that night, which washed some of that, which washed some, some of that down, so it settled downward. And that's what created the problems on, when it came to us, snow plowing, because it never settled properly. And we were, I think we cleaned that like three or four times before they even came back out there. They actually came and cleaned up yards and stuff like that, too, because they felt bad about it. So they were out cleaning up yards and, and sweeping up some of that stuff, too. Because if people were not happy about it, then I wouldn't be happy about it either, seeing chip seal in my, in my yard, you know?
Okay. Anything else?
Vote yes for that truck. Just kidding.
All right, Todd. Any questions, concerns for Todd here? All right. Thank you for coming by and sharing with us the updates.
At birthday. Young and.
Yeah, okay. All right. Village office updates.
I'm going to do that.
Lisa's not here.
I'm going to do that with my treasurer report.
Okay. All right, so we'll just pass on, and we're going to go right into treasurer report. Why don't we get the bills out of the way, and then we'll come back to the administrative updates.
Okay. The first run of checks was $67,116. The second run, $73,655.94. And then there are several highlighted that were over $5,000 on the sheet that you all signed.
Can you explain that, several that were highlighted over $5,000?
Sure. At Home Again, that was their incentive.
Yes.
That they would be getting. We had $8,500 to Jacob Brothers for river cleaning and clearing. $6,500 to MSA for SDW application and administrative costs. $6,000 to Scott Construction for chip sealing Lawn Street. And then $10,425 to Associated Bank, that's the interest on the GO bond, 2019A. $18,110, Associated Bank, that's the interest on the GO bond, 2014A. And then $39,755.54 to Baumann Associates for auditing and accounting.
Okay. The one that was for river cleaning to Jacob Brothers, that, we'll end up, what, turning that in for reimbursement from the Cambridge Foundation?
I am not clear on that. I would have to check with Lisa.
Okay.
Yeah? Todd knows. Okay.
And I thought they, they gave us nine. So it's saving $500.
Okay. All righty. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
What's the total of the bills, so I can make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
$0.94?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $140,771.94.
Second.
All right.
Any further discussion? Questions? All right, roll call.
I have one discussion point. I went to a meeting with the volunteer fire department, and Terry brought up the fact that the 2% dues that we usually pay have not come in yet. So if you could just look into that.
Okay, yeah, I know I have not seen them come through yet, but I will don't check.
All right. Just the fire department's waiting for it.
I can do that for you.
Does the FERB department send an invoice on that?
Usually send an email.
Oh, an email?
Saying when it's going to be deposited.
I just put in my notes here from the meeting, Cambridge hasn't submitted their 2% dues. It's usually sent in July, sent to the Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department.
Those aren't even out.
Right, so like after we receive it, it's kind of a pass along?
It's a pass through, yeah.
Correct.
Oh, got it.
All right. You're making a motion, Chris? For the payment of the bills? All right, do we have a second?
I did.
You did.
Okay. I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Brannick?
Yes.
Franklin? Whitwer?
Yep.
McNally?
Yes.
Did I forget, Chris?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we're done with that. Now we'll go back to updates, Village Office. Tammy, can you?
Sure. Okay. It's kind of a treasurer slash administrator update. The budget versus the actual, I put those in your packet, so you could take a look at those. We received the August settlements from Dane County in the amount of $338,351.93. And the Jefferson County settlement for August, $10,234.81. We received the $10,000 safety grant. I'm supposed to say thank you to myself for compiling and submitting. And we received some grant money for the bike path, $191,091.35. We're in the process of finishing up the audit field work. We just have a few more things to go. We talked with them, had a conference call with them last week. So we're putting, the deadline for us to get everything to them would be at the end of next week, and then they'll start compiling everything. And I'm beginning budget prep, starting to get things in order and separating things by category, so that when we audit finance meets, we can kind of be prepared and stuff.
Good.
What's the timing on that versus when the audit will be done?
Well, we're hoping the audit will be done, you know, sometime early September. Start the, start the preliminary type of budget things, you know, any time from now through September. It'll probably take us through November to get things done.
Yep. It usually takes us, I mean, we usually meet like three or four times, like the two weeks before we have posted.
I'm going to want to do that sooner, so, just so you know.
That'd be great, so.
So you had distributed the budget versus the actual report, and there's all kinds of variances all over the place.
Right, and that audit will, will help.
Still pretty new, I mean, do you have any feel for the numbers, and are we okay?
A little bit, I mean, I.
Budget, or we got issues? I mean, it's just so hard to look at it with all the variances.
It is. It's difficult, and I'm still checking numbers, and I'll do that with the audit, too, to make sure that things were entered correctly, because I didn't enter all of these numbers. So it's a matter of going back and forth and checking.
Still learning the ropes, I know.
Yeah. I mean, I'm getting the system down pretty good, but then once we get the audit, and this is a new auditor as well, somebody new than the village has had in the past. So it's kind of been a learning curve there, too. Yeah, so. We're getting there.
Okay. Anything else for Tammy? Okay. Tammy, thank you. Let's move on. New business. We have the RFP for the Village website.
Well, Lisa told me that you guys had passed that once before.
We had passed an RFP for the website.
To go ahead and start getting requests for proposals?
Correct.
Okay. And I know it was brought up at the Planning Commission. If you want to maybe elaborate why you think we should get going with it a little bit sooner?
Yeah, so as part of our Smart Growth Plan, we want to have a website that actually works so we can have communication with our citizens. It's quite difficult to get even to meeting minutes and such. We specifically were talking about, in reference to Plan Commission, was how the building codes and such are not currently updated on the Muni code, which is all tied into the whole fact that they can't get the website to work properly. So this was a request to expedite that because we need to have information available to people online. It's kind of important. That was the gist of it.
Yeah, and I have reached out this week to three different website providers right now, and they're hopefully going to be getting back to me, hopefully before our next board meeting.
Do we see a day coming where we ask our residents to give us their email address? Or is this going to be something that they initiate with us?
Well, I know a couple of the, the websites that I've looked into have like a notification system. So like whenever anything is posted on the website, they can go in and they can sign up for updates, like in all categories, certain categories. And they'll get like a text message or an email saying, you know, check the website, there's a new agenda, you know, for the Village Board or for the Planning Commission. You know, if there's any alerts that we want to put out, like let's say heat advisory alert, and they're welcome to come here, that's something that we'll be able to put on the website. And they'll send out notifications, so the residents would sign up for those notifications.
They'd volunteer their email.
That's what I'm hoping. We can choose a website that has that. I think it's, it's a really big thing to be able to inform people more, you know, than just going to the website. If they want to sign up for something, then.
You would have to have it where if they were contacting us and they initiated, that's one thing. If, if we're going to talk with them, then they have to be able to block it, because I don't think they want to get.
Well, they would, they would opt into the notifications. So by opting in, they're saying, go ahead, and, and as Tammy said, you can pick and choose what you want with most of them.
Correct.
You can pick and choose what kinds of things you want to be notified on. So if they don't want them, then they just opt out.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And they would have to go to the website, physically go in there and sign up for what they wanted. So it wouldn't be just going to every resident.
So the current website's not supported by anybody, or it's just?
We haven't had a.
Well, there is a website.
There's a website.
But it's pretty archaic.
It's not very easy to use, it's not very user-friendly.
It's also not the first search, when you search for Village of Cambridge, it's not the first thing that comes up. Really got to search for it.
I'd go through Wikipedia.
Yeah, me, too.
To get to it.
All right. So we don't really have to do anything? We're, you're just, you're still in the process?
Yeah, I'm just kind of bringing it back up again, just so that you all are aware, I'm going to start proceeding to get some quotes and bids for that, so that.
When does our contract with the current web provider end?
I will need to check on that, I'm not positive about that.
Because we need to make sure we're working backwards from there?
Correct.
If we don't want to pay another year for, or if we want to, or we may end up overlapping and, overlapping and double paying.
It's just a hosting fee, they don't maintain it for us?
I, sorry, I didn't hear what you were going to say.
It's just a hosting fee we pay, or they're not maintaining it, or what?
Correct.
Pretty much.
Yeah, it's pretty much just a.
They don't have a lot of customer service at all, and.
Yeah, they don't, they don't update it for us, we have to update it ourselves.
And some of these new website providers, you can be trained to update it. One in particular, I know, they'll update it all for you if you want them to, and it's no additional cost, it's included in their customer service. So that's what we had at my previous job, and we had just gotten that before I left, so.
Did it seem to work okay just before you left?
Yeah, I loved it. It was great, it was easy.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's move on. Item 8B, signage for public parking and restrooms.
This also came out of a combination of Plan Commission, but also Public Works. So a while back, there was a request to have signage put up for the restroom, you know, so that people know that the West Side Park has a restroom available there. But at Plan Commission, someone asked, we were talking about parking stalls. There's some discussion about the spots next to the plow, if those, the police said that they don't want stalls there anymore, it's too confusing. So there was some discussion about, one of the business owners doesn't want people to come to their place to use the restroom, and doesn't want people parking behind her building because that's her parking. So this was more of just a follow-up to see what happened to the signage for the restroom, for one thing. This was Chuck that asked for it, so I hope I'm getting it right. And then the suspension for the public parking was, obviously, we can't put public parking, no parking signs on private buildings. We can't do that. To more clearly define what is and is not public parking. I'm not sure how you do that, but.
This, this is public parking, right? There, there's signs on that indicate public parking.
Okay. But, but, but is, is there, is there a way, is, like downtown, are there signs that say public parking is this way? And bat, and restrooms are that way? You know, it's the wayfinding signs. Do we have those where if people were looking for signage and saying, I need to find a park, that it would direct us to this parking lot?
Nine out of 10 people that go to the bathroom in an urgent situation will go to the gas station. That's, that's public, too. That's, that's what, you're, you're, you're going to add more signs out there to what people already know. Anybody that's, anybody that's riding the trail, believe me, I know when they're riding the trails, we're constantly in those bathrooms taking care of them because they're empty and everything, all the time. And they know exactly where these bathrooms are. They, I, I see guys with bikes parking in here all the time.
So I, I understand that, but we have gotten a complaint from one of our business owners that a number of people come in and use her bathroom because they don't know where the public bathroom is. They don't buy anything from her store, they just come in and use her bathroom and leave.
Then I think the onus of the signage should be on the business owner.
I was just in the market the other day, and they have a sign up next to their bathroom. This is for our customers only. There's a public bathroom in the park, and, you know, so, I mean, that's all they.
They could sign it in the park.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Right at the, right at the.
Yeah, that's where I was thinking of, of public restroom, because I wouldn't.
Trust me, they already pull it's there.
I wouldn't necessarily know, though, if I was just out here for a walk, I wouldn't necessarily know that that was public restrooms in that building in the park.
Anybody that's riding the trail, they already know. But anyway, we could pull one right at the, right at the trail that's coming in, which would indicate.
Yep.
Public, public restroom.
I think that would help. But, but it's not just people who are on the trail that might be using the bathroom, it might be people who are shopping downtown, and, you know, or people who, so it-
Well, if they're shopping downtown, chances are that their bathroom will be open to those people shopping, so, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a slippery slope right there.
Okay.
I don't, I don't wanna be a village just encumbered by signage, you know, I mean-
It is already.
There are wayfinder signs for parking up at this end, and at this end of town.
There are, okay.
Yeah, um, I know Lisa and I had talked a little bit about it, and she thought a, a good place for a public restroom sign would be at, up at the trailhead as well.
Perfect.
That was her thought.
Yeah, that, that's, I have that-
We put it on the west, we put it on the west park side facing that trail.
Yeah, you put it on the other side of the street.
Add that for future agenda height.
I guess.
And I, and I can tell that, that bathroom, those bathrooms are well-used, they are, they are eating up material fast. So, when it comes to wintertime, when it comes to wintertime, you know, it kinda slacks off a little bit, and you just have your ski people and stuff like that, but, it, it would be nice if, if they came off that trail there and knew that there was a public bathroom head, if they'd never been here before.
Yeah, I think that would work perfectly.
You wanna make a motion?
I feel that people that, people that own businesses should have a sign up if they-
Oh, I think people who should-
Madison does that.
Yeah, and, you know, parking for, you know, avid gardener only, you know, that's not what I'm just bringing up, it's, it's, I'm saying-
A business owner, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna make a motion to have a sign put up down there, the trailhead?
Uh-
Are we talking about the lift station in Westside Park?
Yeah.
That's, that's where you want the sign?
No, we want the sign at, at-
At the lift station?
Like across the street from the trailhead.
Yeah, at the lift station, yes, yes.
At the trailhead, it'd be on the west park side facing, the, it would be, as you're walking up, you'll be able to see it across the, the sign.
Yep.
I, I don't have a problem with that, I think that's a good idea.
Do we have any in inventory?
No.
Something we'd have to purchase?
Right.
I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase and install a public restroom sign at the trailhead in Westside Park.
Perfect.
How much is the cost on the sign?
I'll second with a second.
What's the cost of a sign? Do you know offhand?
It might be anywhere between twenty and fifty dollars, depending upon, if, if you're gonna go all stylish, then you're gonna, you know, just a standard sign. I'll just see what I can get for a standard sign, so, I'll search it, search it, get it.
Okay, we're all, any other questions? I can't believe we're gonna have to do this, but it's me.
And if we, and if we decide it's ugly, then someone else can, um, donate a public restroom sign, if they don't like the one you picked, right? Okay.
Roll call, Tammy.
Brennan?
Yes.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Chris? Phelps?
Yep.
McNally?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all naming rights to the sign.
Right.
Uh, now we'll get into your topic here, we're gonna swing for the fences. Uh, the purchase of the two thousand twenty-five International Truck Snowplow.
This was a recommendation that came out of Public Works, um, and a conflicting recommendation from Water and Sewer. Um, so, the Public Works, uh, needs a new snowplow truck, um, the quote is in your, in the packet here. Um, Public Works recommended to purchase the snowplow, with the caveat that we are ordering two years in ahead, so it's two hundred and ten thousand was the recommendation, to purchase this out two years. Water and Sewer, um, as I had mentioned earlier, it was a split vote where, um, the motion passed, uh, to not recommend to the board because Water and Sewer, um, the way it would work is they would be responsible for twenty-five percent of the purchase price, because it would be used to keep the storm sewers clear, and also be used for Water and Sewer in the summertime, uh, for whatever gra- gravel or something that Derek had mentioned something that they, you used-
Gravel, well, when we do, when we do water main repair-
Yeah.
And other gravel oriented things.
So, um, Water and Sewer was a, a concern with, um, being on the hook for fifty thousand dollars, um, and only having one quote, uh, in front of them, they wanted to see multiple quotes. So, their recommendation was to, uh, hold off on this until you can get at least two more bids, in addition to the one we currently have. Um, they were okay with purchasing a truck, they understand that that portion of it, however, they think that, uh, we need to shop a little bit more. So, it, uh, Todd, if you had anything else to add, that's-
I do, it's, it's, uh, no money until it's done, there's no, absolutely no money till it's done. Another thing is, is that, uh, I have to wait till mid-September, this, this, if this doesn't go through, the chances are it's probably gonna go under ten grand, five to ten grand, that's, that's how these things are going, you know, but anyway, uh, every, every truck place that I have called right now is telling me that I have to wait till about mid-September to even get a price quote, and that the chances are very slim that I'd see it in two years. And International is telling me two years.
And you need it how soon?
Yesterday.
But, you're not gonna get it.
These, these trucks, the, the problem is, is that we're repairing the trucks just as much as we're plowing them. So what's gonna happen when two of these plow trucks go down, which is gonna probably happen? Because we're using used, they bought a used truck, a two thousand six used International, okay? And you have a two thousand eight that's being repaired every time it goes out, something goes wrong with it every time it goes out.
And they're both Internationals?
One's a Chevy, and one's the, and the other one's an International, and the two thousand six is an International, that one's being repaired probably about every other time it goes out.
So why would you wanna buy another International?
Uh, International is actually a better, a better quality, if, I don't know if you've noticed, but when you, when you see the trucks that are out there plowing the US highways, they're Internationals, they, they kinda, they kinda lead the, the market in plowing.
And, and the repair is, the constant repairs is because we've pretty much taken them to the end of their useful life, and we're just continuing to stretch that on and on.
Well, a lot of, a lot of what happened here was, is that these trucks were not properly taken care of.
Maintained.
And now they're, now we're paying that price for not, it's, it's, it's like-
I understand.
It's like, I don't know, I, it's like never buying anything and hoping it's gonna hold on, you know, and that's, that's where we're at right now, is we're wondering, will that Chevy hang on for this year and, until we can get another truck, that's where we're at.
But even if we, even if, if we approve and say we wanna purchase this one now, it might still, it won't be here for this winter, and there's a chance it wouldn't be here for next winter.
But there's a better odds that it will be.
Right, but there's a chance it won't.
Right.
If we, if we wait for the other bids, we have no idea if it's gonna be two seasons or three seasons, that we wouldn't get the, that one.
And that's, that's where I'm at, and that's, they were the only ones that would give me a price at this point, because they're gonna wait till mid-September, and then they're gonna want me to call in and talk to them, and, and they're gonna probably want twenty percent down for whatever you do, and International's not asking for anything now.
Is there a significance to mid-September, is that when the model year changes over or something?
I don't know, I tried asking that reason, he goes, it's just, that's just the way we do it in our ordering.
Must be model year thing or something.
Is there a much-used market out there?
So, it's, you're looking at probably twenty twenty-six for, uh, for anything beyond that.
Like Bill was saying, is there any, uh, is there any market out there for, um-
Decent.
Decent used?
No, they're, that, we're, we're in the used, we have all used trucks.
Yeah.
The, the two trucks, the two trucks that we're with right now, uh, I asked for a trade-in on them, and he goes, I honestly couldn't give you eight grand for it, for the Chevy, because it's in that bad a shape. When you, when you lift the body of that Chevy, the, the thing is rotted out, it only has fourteen thousand miles on it, it looks like it has two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, because it wasn't improperly taken care of, it wasn't washed properly, it wasn't taken care of.
But a used market, you may not have that problem.
Used market, you, you're not, you better be right on top of it if you're buying it, that's, that's the way I say it.
You just, I mean if-
If you're not gonna buy it that day, you're not gonna get it.
If they're in that bad a shape now, if they're telling you two years, it's probably gonna be three, and you're better off looking for a used one now before everything breaks.
You buy a used one, and you're gonna be right back where you are right now, okay, you're buying a used plow truck, okay? You're buying a used plow truck that's been out there salting, and it's gonna, chances are it's gonna have the same problems that you have right now. Where, where you have that, we have a two thousand six that was just bought a year ago, year and a half ago, and it's, it's already having problems.
I mean, one of the benefits we do have is that we have a, a, like a licensed mechanic on staff.
We got a lucky mechanic there.
But that can, that can take care of the, the mechanics and bubble gum, but it's getting to a point where it's, you know, we're paying more for what, what services provided, so.
Right, so I gue- I guess, uh, if you use a new one, you're not gonna see it for at least two years.
Two years, two years.
And you're putting out, according to this, what, two hundred and ten thousand dollars? But you still, in the meantime, have to repair the ones that we have, so your two hundred and ten thousand dollars is actually not two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Well, and that's because these things weren't traded out properly, like they shouldn't have been first place, but that's where we're at.
Well, I, I get that, but here and there, you're, you're now spending well over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars probably to maintain what we have with the bu- band-aids and bubble gum, to wait two years to get this two hundred and ten thousand dollar vehicle.
Well, he's not waiting on, because he wants to, it's because-
Well, no.
There aren't trucks available.
I understand that, but it's still a wait period.
I, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the, uh, um, International Snowplow Truck slash Snowplow.
Uh, I have a question about your motion, so, um, the total purchase price is two-ten, Water and Sewer, we were asking for twenty-five percent of the cost to go for Water and Sewer, so, I'm sorry, uh, the, the total purchase price is two-ten.
Yep.
Uh, we were asking Water and Sewer to take twenty-five percent of that cost, so, how much did you, is your motion for borrowing?
Well-
Because Water and Sewer voted against that.
Okay, so, so I'm making, I'm making a motion to go ahead and, or and purchase it, with an understanding that we're gonna have to figure out the financing for it, but we've got time to figure out the financing.
Yeah, either way, we've gotta borrow.
Yeah, and, and my anticipation would be we'd push back against Water and Sewer and, and tell them they gotta pony up some money for it, because bottom line, it's helping them out too, so.
They, they would also use it, correct, Water and Sewer?
Yes.
Yeah, we use, we use-
So then they need to pony up some money too.
For water main repair and-
Right, but-
I, I agree with Paula.
I, I'm, I'm okay with figuring out the financing of it at, at a future time, because we don't have to put any money down.
No.
No money down, I would, let's get this thing on order and get it moved out, and then let's figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Okay, you're making a motion?
I'll second that.
Now we have discussion here.
Yeah, now, now let's have the further discussion.
Sorry, here's the other discussion.
Yep.
Did they give an inkling that you could actually get a twenty-four at all?
It's, it's whatever that model is.
Well, the, this is-
Twenty twenty-five model.
Right, this is a twenty-five, did you inquire about a twenty-four at all? I'm, I'm just asking a question, a twenty twenty-four.
They do not have a twenty-four.
Okay, so that answers the question.
What you're meaning is the, you're getting the next model that's gonna be made for that stretch of time.
I, I, I- The Public Works vehicles, we, we, we have band-ated them, bought used, tried to get by, and it, it always seems to end up not being beneficial for us. We've got a year, and, I, we've got a year, I'll just say a year, we have a year to figure out how we're gonna finance this thing, and I don't think two hundred and ten dollars is a bad investment for this village to make for the benefit we will get from a brand-new snowplow.
Well, it's two hundred and ten thousand.
Right, sorry, what?
He said two hundred and ten.
So on page eleven here of this, uh, report from the International people, it says this price quote is only good for fourteen days.
I just talked to him, I just talked to him, he's, he's abiding by the test, you know.
He's abiding by the number, not the fourteen days.
He's, he's abiding by the number.
Okay, so he's actually foregoing the fourteen day-
I'll double check with him, 'cause I know he told me zero, zero down and payment upon completion of the truck.
But the-
Or delivery of the truck, I'm sorry, delivery of the truck.
The quote said for fourteen days on page eleven, so he's gonna say it's okay not to go by the fourteen days, and just go by the two hundred nine thousand and odd change, almost two hundred and ten thousand dollars, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'd like to see that in writing, though, until we approve that.
Well, it will be in writing.
Okay.
The, the issue I have with this is, I, I am a proponent for Public Works to get new everything, and I'm a little biased like that. But, I'm also a little, uh, understanding of where Water and Sewer's coming from, because all they're asking for, they see the need of a new truck, but all they're asking for, so they can, they are willing to pony up that twenty-five percent, is two more bids. Why is that such a hard thing to get to?
Uh, what I'm telling you is, is we're gonna snooze and we're gonna lose, that's what's going on right now. If, if I hold back, and I, and I will talk to him and see how long he'll-
But you have a fourteen-day window where you can get two more bids, correct?
No, the fourteen-day window was on July twenty-sixth, that was, that was my question, are they still gonna honor this?
They have a number for me right now, I, I called and talked to him and made sure that he's holding that for four.
Is there any sort of penalty if we say, yeah, we want this, and then say?
But we have to do our due diligence, and, you know, that's usually the norm, is you get three bids, and then we discuss it, and we, we pick from the three, I think. I wasn't at Water and Sewer, but I think that's what's-
No, that, that, that was the gist of it.
Well, I can wait, I can wait a couple more weeks and do that, but you might be losing that price in the process of doing that, chances are it probably will be, because we already, we've already been down this road.
But you're assuring twenty-five percent and no pushback from Water and Sewer, if you do that, due diligence.
Well, what I, what I'm trying to tell you though, is that you have a, the, the system has abused changing these vehicles over and over and over again, and by doing that, you might lose out on that, on that number right there. I will, I will, I'll wait and I'll go get, I'll get some more bids.
Well, it depends on how we vote, maybe you won't have to. Chris is one-
I'm not gonna have a problem going out and getting more bids, but getting more bids is not gonna, it's gonna be two, three weeks before I can get those bids.
Why would it take that long?
Because they're waiting, they wait till, till order time, which is mid-September.
For all the new, new models to come out.
Yeah. They don't wait around like that, they don't wait around for fourteen days and give us, International's giving us that opportunity, because they deal with us, and they deal with us.
Um, just, Commissioner Gunsir, um, his, he also wanted to know what the terms were, how much was, had to be put down, down payment. So, uh, if you do go out for other quid, yeah, but it didn't say it in this quote, so, if you go out for additional quotes, if that's the way this vote goes, um, please have them include what sort of financing terms would be a part of that to appease Water and Sewer.
Well, that, that-
If we go-
But that's not part of the motion, that's in front of us, though, so.
Well, how, how was the financing, I'm, I'm still new to the board, I know our budget's a million seven.
So, two hundred and- Yeah, two hundred and ten thousand, we could either take a short-term loan, we could, uh, we probably have money in reserves, so we could probably pay for it out of reserves, we can, we can put, we can put some of our dollars in the twenty twenty-four budget against, so, you know, we can start to budgeting part, part of the payment for it, and-
But the way I understand it, for us to budget for it, we need to ask them out of some other bucket, because we can't raise taxes by ten, fifteen percent to pay for it.
Or we borrow.
So we borrow, that's what we borrow for.
And then how does-
That goes against our general obligation debt.
Is there a limit on that?
Yeah.
And are we close to that limit?
No, we're at like, eight percent, and a-
Yeah, yeah, two hundred and ten thousand is not gonna put us over-
Above the level we can get to.
I'm new to all this.
Yeah, right.
I don't understand.
It's the-
Because that's a big number, two hundred thousand dollars.
We still have several million we can borrow, but we're putting several million in water.
But he still has to pay it back, and it still has to come out somewhere in the budget, doesn't it, at some point?
Yeah.
It isn't free money, otherwise, let's borrow it all.
Who came up with the twenty-five percent for Water and Sewer?
Um, that was, uh, you, actually, uh, I asked you if, I asked if Water and Sewer would be willing to contribute, because I asked the question, um, are we gonna use it to plow the streets? are we gonna use it to plow the streets? And I asked Lisa, she was sitting to my left and you were to my right. Um, and I asked, um, if we are using it to keep the storm drains cleared, um, does that, would that come towards water and sewer? And then I asked, is there anything else that water and sewer would be using it for?
It's going towards water and sewer.
So that, it was my trying to figure out where we could beg, borrow, and steal. If water and sewer rejects it, that, so be it.
That's what I think. I, I just don't see how we can put off purchasing one. And my concern is if we, we wait and wait the month, get other bids, take it in front of the committees, get, get approvals, then we might not get it for three, Christmas, for three winter seasons instead of right now not having it for two winter seasons. And, and I don't know with how poorly that our snowplows are operating now, if, if we could hold out for a third, for a third winter without a new snowplow.
It's public safety.
It, it, right.
It's public safety.
It's, 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 yeah, it's public safety, it's.
And we're, and, and like the other vehicles that were, were running in borrow time.
Yep.
They weren't, they weren't traded off properly or whatever, and now they're, they're running in force right now.
Is there any way, Todd, that if we were to go ahead with this, that it, you would still, you know, in the next day or two, call up any other dealers to see?
And I have.
Okay.
That's just, that's the only one that would give me a price. That's the only one that would give me a price. Cause they wanna wait till mid-September, cause that's when the new pricing comes up.
Yeah, and I can imagine that that's gonna do only one thing.
And I, I can't see it going down.
No, I don't either. I don't like this, but, and I appreciate getting quotes, I just, I don't know what you do if nobody wants to give you a quote. So then we're stuck with the only.
Did water and sewer know that? That he had done, he had reached out and got quotes, but didn't receive any response back?
Nope, they did not. Lisa, um, Lisa wasn't there, and you, you didn't know, I didn't know.
At which meeting?
Water and sewer.
Oh, that would've been Vicki.
Vicki, oh yeah, Vicki didn't, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Vicki didn't know.
That's okay.
All right, um, well, we have, can we just reiterate the motion, please?
Let's see. Motion to approve the purchase of an international truck slash snowplow for two hundred and ten thousand with financing figured out at a later date.
And I seconded it.
Yes. Okay, uh, any other questions? All right, I'll call the matter to a vote, roll call, please.
Okay, Whitworth?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yep.
McNally?
Yes.
Yes.
So who figures out the finding at a later date?
Get on it tomorrow.
Who's responsible for that?
We'll have to sit down at a, a future board meeting.
Yeah.
And hash that all out.
In the interim, Todd, if you do happen to get any kind of response back from, from, from whatever, we voted, we made our decision. But if you could, if you do get any other information in, if you can give that to me and I can share with water and sewer.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. It's a moot point.
Yep.
Okay, all right, we'll move ahead with that. Unfinished business, uh, now we're on to library board developments, Paula?
So we, um, so the lib- the library board is required to have certain people on the board that meet certain requirements. A person out of Jefferson County, a person that represents the school, uh, and then, uh, people that represent Cambridge. So, so we ident- we had someone that we thought was representing the school who is not, we found out that they actually have to work at the school in order to be able to represent the school. That person happens to live in Jefferson County, which we don't have a board member that's on Jefferson County. The two people we approved previously, neither one lived in Jefferson County. So, we're putting Kristen into the Jefferson County slot. We are withdrawing Pam Schmidt's, um, uh, nomination, and we're gonna put up, sorry, I have to, I'm gonna find the name so that I don't get it wrong. Jennifer. Wrong email, let me find the other one. All right. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. I thought more would be in the packet. We're good. Jennifer Sim- Simden. Jennifer, Jennifer Simden is, is going to, is, has been put up by the school district to be the appointed. So I will make a motion to rescind the nomination of Pamela Schmidt and to, uh, to put forth the nomination of Jennifer Simden to be on the, the library board.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussions, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's. All right. Dancing Goat Sampler update. Who we have on this one?
What came out of water and sewer?
Uh, Steve Struss, um, briefly mentioned the COWC that, um, the two things he talked about were the thing at the wastewater plant, but then also the sampling for the goat. He just mentioned that, um, if I recall, you had a meeting with, uh, yep, and that there is progress, good faith effort being made by the goat, and he wanted to say thank you to the goat for, um, I think that's what, how he phrased it, is he wanted to, or was that you that, from the previous time?
I sent that email out, just, uh, but there, there has been some new, I guess, information. The COWC isn't willing to provide their sampler now, I guess. The testing thing might be off the table, I don't know all of the details, I was on vacation, but maybe.
It's not, it's not ready to be outside, so unfortunately, the letter that was approved by the board, there's a lot of things in there that the burden on us is gonna be significant. There's a new testing device for this short-term discovery, I heard the testing device alone is twelve thousand dollars. That's not installing it, that's not the test. So we do have communication going. We met on August eleventh, of course, we got the letter on July twenty-seventh, it took us two weeks to get that meeting. We sent questions to Steve, to Pauline Gay, it took, I think, a week, then Jane replied to the note that I sent to Steve. So there's a lot of lags, like within the communication, there's a lot of information we're still asking for.
Okay.
So that's kind of the update, it is gonna be very, very costly for us for a business rep, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars a year now.
In the letter that we sent, we were hoping that Dancing Goat would be able to use that equipment. I, I understood a little bit different version, of, of course, I wasn't at the meeting, but my understanding had been that, um, the Dancing Goat was asking some questions about the sampling, uh, equipment, and so, yeah, it, it may not meet your needs. We were hoping that, that it could so that we could offset some of the costs. So there, I understand the, the equipment was an issue, and then the COWC apparently has raised some questions about whether they will be able to do the testing at the cost, well, if they will be able to perform the testing themselves. That's another item that I understand you discussed that would, um, that would inform whether they could still do that testing at the cost of twelve dollars and fifty cents per test. And so, depending on what happens with COWC, it, that may affect the cost of the actual samples.
Yeah, I would just mention, like, you guys signed off on the letter, there's things in there, we will be able to use the COWC equipment. Tests are gonna be twelve dollars and fifty cents, we appreciate you guys partnering, we wanna reduce the burden as an expense. Obviously, there was not due diligence done on this, um, you guys signed off on that letter.
So.
And there does seem to be, you know, some communication that needs to happen with COWC and this.
And just to be clear, tho- this is the way our ordinance flows, this is, it is the board's decision to require sampling. I think it was the board's intention to throw you a bone and, and see what we could offer, see what the board could offer to help offset the costs. But ultimately, it's, you know, it's obviously the industrial customer's responsibility to provide the sampling, not the board's responsibility to offer the equipment, and so.
Jane, I would just say, though, you authored that letter, and, and I don't know if they had the entire track base when they signed off on that. But I think that's just the point to be made of throwing them a bone, I don't think there was proper due diligence because you put something in front of the board that says we could use the equipment, test their twelve dollars and fifty cents, and both of those things are not true. And that's just, I think, they just need the appropriate information to make these decisions because frankly, the board might have thought about it a bit differently on how can we do this differently if they knew Dancing Goat was gonna be a twenty thousand dollar expense.
Well, the board. Yeah, but to, to be fair, we did get that information from C- COWC. So it's not like Jane pulled that information out of her ass. So she, she actually got that information from someone, and we were trusting what they were telling us.
And they decided to change their mind.
And they decided to change their minds. So, so don't, don't, I would, don't come down on Jane for how, that she did anything wrong, she was working on the inf- we all had the same information Jane had when she made that letter.
I, I guess my frustration is more, I'm trying to communicate with the people that, that provide the technical specs, and it goes weeks on end, and our method of communication is through an attorney, and, and for us, that just seems a little bit off.
Well, unfortunately, COWC has asked that, because you are our customer, not COWC's customer, COWC asked us not to have you guys talking directly to, to Steve out at COWC.
And, and that was not communicated to us.
Correct.
And frankly, we met with Chris and Steve Struss on August eleventh, said, you guys go work directly with, with Steve. Jane sent me an email this past Friday and said, I understand you're working directly with Steve, worked this out. So if that's the case, we just need to know.
Well, that's what we were originally told, that COWC, when, when we decided to write the letter, you guys, we were originally told COWC didn't want Steve involved because he didn't want to get sticky and icky because you guys are our customer and we are Steve's customer, you know, COWC's customer. So they wanted to have those lines of communication, um, and, and, and so that's why it went that way. It would've been better if we just had gotten everybody in the room all at once and just communicated at once. But eh, it's small-town politics, and sometimes that just doesn't happen, small-town government.
Who, who should I be communicating with, like, cause Jane told me on Friday, talk directly with Steve, you told me COWC says, don't talk with him.
Well, it, no.
I think, uh, COWC is putting an umbrella over Steve Sandsbury, and they, they don't want him, uh, he, he's kind of, you know, he's got our ear, but he's, he's, he's being safeguarded by COWC. So, um, fortunately for us, we have two members, Steve Struss and, uh, who's the other member?
Ted Combiere.
Combiere, that are on COWC that can report back to us, uh, on what's going on. From what I understand, um, the Oakland entity of COWC wants to shield him from any kind of relationship with the goat.
Steve Sandsbury.
Right, Steve Sandsbury. So, to answer your question, who to communicate with, the same us, I'm back from vacation now, so, um, myself.
And I, I, you're on that email then, if you can help me with the technical specs that I sent over on Friday.
Right.
I, I would love to get info, but we're trying to work on this plan that we got on the twenty-seventh, and it's been very, very.
But I have to, I have to go, I'll have to go through Steve Sandsbury to get those technical specs for you.
Is there a third party we can bring in, a consultant? I mean, this is kind of a odd arrangement we got going that maybe can bring something to light other than a twenty thousand dollar system that, you know. I mean, there's gotta be alternatives, or, you know, that's a huge number, and then ongoing testing.
When you guys.
We've had all this misinformation.
You guys would do it on your own expense, if we didn't, go like, do it ourselves. So how you gonna do it? You don't even got no sampler. There's gotta be a good way to get this done, right? Cause we're not gonna get done, otherwise. You see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, I mean, our ordinances do provide that the, the costs would go on the, on the industrial user.
I understand that.
And so either, you know, if they could do the, the consultant or we could, but either way, those costs would, the cost of the consultant would, we, we would under our ordinances as they exist now, we'd have to charge that back.
For a fact-finding mission, yeah.
I mean, that is, I, I do a lot of wastewater work, and, um, our firm does a lot of wastewater work, and this is a very standard protocol. We've sample first, when, when, especially when we have a situation like we do now where the, we got very close to the wastewater discharge permits limit, it's very standard that the first thing you do is collect information. Before that, you can't really articulate any numeric standard that we would put, require, you know, we have other options, and I'm happy to talk about them, the other options that we have. Sampling is always a first step, you need the information to take the next steps.
Jane, I would say, though, just one thing, and I hope we can get through this, I know there's awkward relationships, COWC with the board. You know, there was a spike in May, we talked to Sandsbury in December, these are the two spikes that, that were notified. May, we did not hear about this until we saw a board agenda item, uh, with, that said sampler, and then we got the letter. I know there are other communities and townships, we are your biggest user. It sometimes would be logical pick of the phone, hey, did you guys have something happen? And let us look into that, but to go three months and then we get this letter? And this is the stuff that we just, I, I don't wanna communicate through an attorney, and that's our only way to talk to the village. We wanna be a community partner, but if this is the only way that we can interact, it's, it's, it's a little disheartening, to be honest.
You've been communicating up to this point, have you, Chris?
Right.
To a point, right?
To a point.
We had some, some lapses in communication that you and I talked about.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Todd, did, 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 sorry, did Steve Sandsbury tell Derek about the spike in May?
I'm not sure.
Cause I don't even know when we heard about that spike.
I believe he did.
Okay, so. So was it, was it?
I honestly don't think it came up until it was a COWC.
Did it then come to the water and sewer board about what that? So maybe that could happen if something like this happens again. When Derek gets information like that from Steve, Derek needs to bring it to the water and sewer board, so then the water and sewer board can communicate to, then we'd communicate to Dancing Goat and say, hey, what he gets doing.
All, all with all due respect, I'm, I think, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa and Chris from our meeting last week, I think I've proven to be a good actor in wanting to engage in, in righting the wrongs that I have been through. And, you know, specifically, I want to make sure I'm not shitting in the river. Like, that's one thing I definitely don't wanna do. So like, if you guys could all, I've already humbled myself enough to say this to Lisa and to Chris, if you people could just give us the credit of like, call us, cause, cause what you're talking about is literally like, oh yeah, he's gonna call, and he's gonna phone, and he's gonna call. He should just be able to call us and be like, here's a problem, is there a chance it was you guys, what's going on? Cause we might walk toward factory and find a valve that was left off.
Okay.
We might talk to an operator, and the operator might be like, oh yeah, you know, I messed up yesterday, thanks for your mind. And like, that's what a good partner is. And that's what we're really looking for.
Okay, okay.
And I know she's been advised, you know, that, like, that's not your responsibility, you don't have to do that.
That's not true.
But, okay, then, then I was wrong about you. But either way, I think that's all we really wanna do, and it's interesting to come here and try to do that, to not get the.
Okay.
That benefit of doubt.
No, so, so I was not, I, I was not aware that, that you're coming at things from a different way, quite frankly. And that makes me very happy, cause I would love to be able to do the direct communication, would be just so much easier for everyone. So if we're.
I don't wanna come at it this way unless I have to come, unless, you know, people get a, a genuine. I've never come this way until it was like, you know.
Okay.
Until people stopped calling.
Okay, so, so we're starting from a clean slate, we'll just start, when things like this happen again, we just know that we can pick up the phone and call you guys, see what's going on.
Doesn't Steve call you? He has a problem.
No, he sometimes mentions it when he's driving down the road to MJ occasionally.
He, he did in December, he did call us, which was a surprise, and maybe did not get a call, and then, like, now it's, it's a Dancing Goat issue. And, and so that was a bit of a, an initial confusion for Martin.
Sure.
He, he, he did call us at the end of last year.
Okay.
And, and I think it's, it's worth noting as well that the Dancing Goat has been, uh, as of late, you know, they've been very open when there is an issue. There was a recent leak issue, and Sean, you, you sent out emails to the water and sewer folks, and I, I know I got a, an email saying that there was a, a leak that affected some valves, uh, out there, and, and those are the kind of open. And, and those are the kind of open communications that, the, the work I have to do as the Chair of Water and Sewer is I have to go out and I have to talk to Steve Sandsbury and say, hey, whenever there is an issue, we're gonna do X, Y, Z. We have to do that to not only be good neighbors, but to facilitate better communications. Because, and a lot of times, he's in, he's in like troubleshooting mode.
It'd be nice if they take a sample and you send it to some CSI lab somewhere, and they determine what is in it, and whether it's possible it came from them or not.
Right.
But it's, but.
Versus just throwing arms up and saying, now we gotta deal with it. Take a sample and figure out what exactly it is.
If you call us sooner enough, we can talk to all of our operators, we can look at the location by our place, and we can say, hey, odds aren't with us, we'll wait for it, we're sorry.
But it might not be you guys, might be someone else that can identify it's chlorine in the water. I don't know what it is, and you guys don't use chlorine, and it takes us a whole different direction.
Well, we do know that it's BOD, biological oxygen, oxygen demand and suspended solids. We, we know the parameters.
Jane, I've been communicating with you ask time and time. The last time when we first came this meeting, and Steve Sandsbury clearly said, we did not test that day. I just knew that organic chemistry was messed up. But he said clearly that what happened that day was not tested.
All right, it sounds like we could do a little better on the communications. You're back from your vacation.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and Chris?
But I need, I need to get, you know, Steve Sandsbury on board too. Because he's the, the complainer, you know, he's, he's the major complainant in this whole situation. Whenever there's a situation that happens, you know, before he goes out and starts doing his troubleshooting and trying to do, prevent a maintenance or whatever he has to do, he has to call myself. Or at, at the very least, Steve Struss, because he's on COWC, and let, let me know what's going on so I can project, you know, let our board know, let the Water and Sewer folks know, let Todd know what's going on, so.
Who has authority over his position?
Sandsbury?
It's the COWC.
The whole COWC board.
So does, so does Water and Sewer not have?
No, we have no.
So you saying that you.
We have no authority over Steve Sandsbury.
Basically, you need to go to Water and Sewer, or go to COWC and say, the Water and Sewer Committee is requesting that you make.
That these are the actions that are taken, the next time there's another, the next time there's an influx of BODs.
Okay. All right, I don't know if there's anything else that we need to do right now, other than just kind of redouble.
Will the sampler's on hold, or the sampler's not?
Well, we had, we had, I'm sorry.
Chris, you're gonna continue to work with Sean and Nick and get straightened out what it is, what the requirements are for what the sampler that needs to be, where, that the Village Board has asked them.
They need parameters. I, I will get with Steve Sandsbury to get, get those parameters that he's willing to give. And then I think everything from the, from the pricing to the sampler that they had is off the table. So we have to figure out another way to get that sampling put in there. And fortunately, or unfortunately, we, we're gonna have to go off our ordinance, what our ordinance states, correct? So.
Well, not really, right? So you gave us until that day to have a plan. You didn't say the sampler has to be in place on this day. Like, you're the one that actually told me that.
We have to review it, review whatever you have, yeah.
Right, so you don't actually, you get to that deadline, it's not like, oh yeah, we're gonna throw the sampler ourselves, right? It doesn't have to be that, you can, right? Could it be one direction, but you don't have to.
Yep, we're just looking for a plan, and we are looking to, you know, approve that plan in Water and Sewer, get the, and then move it to our Village Board for final approval.
And anything that was.
And again, we, we need requirements. Letter went out July 27th. I've got my communication cadence, I've been very thorough in following up on this. I don't have the information to put a plan in front of you guys, and so I just, I need help on that, and I don't know.
Yeah, we wouldn't expect, I don't think the timeline for the plan and you getting us a plan back to us, the timeline, the countdown for that would start once you have the, the, what the requirements are.
So we just really appreciate that, but so just to bring this up now, because we were told at our meeting last time, I think it was last Friday, that the, the date then starts Friday. So now it's when you guys get back to us with the requirements?
Well, how in the world can we ask them to put a plan together if we haven't given them the, the, the specs of what we need?
Because they're gonna come up with the, they're gonna come up with that. I, I'm not sure what you mean by the specs.
Because they don't know what kind of sampler they need? They don't understand what the requirements are and how often they need to test?
No, we'll, they're not gonna be the ones performing the test. I think they, maybe it's, maybe we should, maybe you know, maybe you're following this, but I'm not. I, I think that the, I think that you have what you need in order to submit a plan.
I don't, Jane, I replied to your email on Friday, I don't, I don't. You did not address the questions, and that's what I'm trying to get to. And frankly, you know, we don't even know who's doing the tests.
No, and that's not up to this board to decide.
But your note on Friday, and if I can pull it up here, was the COWC is still discussing, you're waiting further directions from COWC on test cost information.
That's right, that's right, because that's not up to this board.
Understood, but I can't put a plan together if I don't know that information, is what I'm saying.
The test cost? Okay, well, then it's up to COWC to, to provide that back. And yeah, the timing, however we want to run the timing, I will, I will defer to you. But yeah, I guess it is important for us to know. If, I, I did not understand that from your email message that you needed the test cost in order to know the plans. I'm still not sure that I fully appreciate why that would be.
I want to put a comprehensive plan in front of you that's very clear on, here's what we're gonna do, here's what we're gonna be measured against, and when it's proven that, hey, we're being good citizens, I can stop coming to these meetings. That, that's the plan I want to put in front of you. I don't want to keep coming back to these and saying, here's a piecemeal part of it, here's a piecemeal part of it. And that, that's, you want to put a plan together, but I can't do it 50%.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's very hard to instruct an electrician, what are you gonna put in? And they just found out last week, hey, you can't use the COWC sampler, and now I'm talking to manufacturers, and $15,000, you know.
All right, Chris, can you, can you with the, your commission, can you talk with them? And then get ahold of Steve Sandsbury and talk with Steve Struss, and then have some regular communications? And then it's understood that whatever deadlines were in there, it's probably, we've lost a month to get to where we're at, so everything would be extended?
If I recall the motion, it was a six-week from the time that the letter was delivered?
And then you were told that the meeting, that it was six weeks from our meeting from August 11th?
Right, because we had a.
I asked for clarification when that motion was made, because I, I wanted to know when that clock would start. I recall the conversation being, as long as you're showing good faith effort, which you already have, to be in compliance, that I didn't think that we were gonna hold you, your feet against the fire on that deadline. It's more, we need to get this resolved sooner rather than later, because we don't want to lose our DNR permit. That was, from her description of it, was pretty scary, so.
Yeah, and you know, your feet have been held to the fire, aren't to be held to the fire, but no one's intending to be held to the fire. So, you know, if you want to engage and construct a dialogue that's mature, you know, we're here to do it, as long as everyone's honest, you know? But, um, yeah, hopefully communication doesn't break down again like it has in the past. We've proven yet again, we're here to be good actors, and we're well within the confines of the law.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Anything else here?
Thanks, Mark.
All right. So, kind of leaving, you know? All right, is there anything else that we need to decide then on this issue?
Just update?
I don't think so.
Just update.
Yeah. Okay, all right, then let's move on to item 9C, Fire Commission Update.
All right, at the last Fire Commission meeting, we elected officers. That was August 10th. Gary was there and filmed it, so the film is out there on YouTube. Mark Cook was re-elected as president. I made a motion to split up the responsibilities of both the Secretary and Treasurer that failed. With that being said, Sheila Palenkis was voted as the Treasurer Secretary. We talked about some union situation coming up with, going back to.
Collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining situation, and then that kind of took us into closed session. We were in closed session for approximately two hours, I believe it was, and then we came out. I made a comment about the Fire and EMS, plan on getting together. We're try, we're trying to get together all at the table to have a conversation about where, where we are moving forward as a commission, and where EMS is and where Fire is, but we need the leadership from both sides to come to the table. So that is what we are trying to do from that perspective. I already mentioned the 2% dues, that was the third thing on my list. Some things that kind of, I mentioned in open session that are not per the IGA is the, the title of our, our EMS Director is that of District Chief. It's causing a lot of confusion, you know, the, the IGA states one particular title, but yet his, his job contract states District Chief. And, and so then NBC 15 was involved in some interviewing on both sides. There was a video that was posted last night from NBC 15 stating the functionality or dysfunctionality of both the Fire and EMS in the commission. If you want to go on NBC 15 and take a look at it, it'll give you an idea of where we sit with it. But I'd be remiss if I didn't share with you that there was some leaked information to NBC 15 from a source that is anonymous, that leaked the PowerPoint that was shared to all of us in closed session when all the municipalities were here. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that that is now in the hands of NBC 15. And with that, that caused a storm of questions from NBC 15, and there is now an open records request from NBC 15 to the commission. And if you allow me, I can read a synopsis of it.
I'll find it.
It's short.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, commission members, my name is Elizabeth Waddes, and I'm a reporter at NBC 15 in Madison. I don't think I have everyone's email address. From January 2022 to August 21, 2023, as listed in the IGA, I'm, I am asking for an open records request per Wisconsin Open Record Statute for the following. As listed in the IGA, reports of district finances of each regular commission meeting and at such other times are required by the commission. Accounts of all district transactions, including monies received and dispersed, all notes, drafts, and other orders for payment of money, including checks signed by Mr. Paul Blount. Records sufficient to show how much money the commission has spent in that same timeframe for legal services provided by, to the commission, including Stephen Zach and his law firm. Please send me the documents when they are complete, instead of sending them all at once. If you have any questions about my request, please feel free to contact me here by my phone, my, my number, and it's Elizabeth Waddes, anchor reporter for NBC 15. So I wanted to read that in its entirety, just to keep everybody informed. And again, my objective is transparency, so I wanted to share that with you. And, and then at this time, I'll field any questions you may have.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, the NBC 15 report said that the Fire Commission is going to be, that EMS and Fire Commission is gonna be coming to us with three options that they put forth? I, I hadn't heard about that before. Was very interested to hear about that on the news versus hearing that about the EMS and Fire Commission. Have you been involved in conversations about what those three options are?
I can tell you that four options were discussed in closed session, that's all I can say.
Okay, all right. I have very big concerns about that PowerPoint presentation being released. So does that mean now anyone can talk about the items that are in that?
I would refer that to Jane.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't maintain, a, a record, once it's released and shared with the public, doesn't really maintain its closed record status once it's out there. If you obtain it from the news, it's fair for you as a policymaker to take it and, and use it accordingly.
Well, we weren't given a copy of it, so Steve, Zach would know who had copies of it. So I would challenge the Fire Commission to identify who had copies of it and do an investigation to see who released that.
Okay.
Well, being in closed session as we were, I don't remember anybody pulling out a phone and recording, you know, even slightly. So I guess it would, if somebody did that, that would be grounds for dismissal, correct?
Yeah, but I don't think that's where it came.
No, no, but I'm saying, if that did happen, that would be grounds for dismissal. But if it leaked out through his office, then he needs to be accountable.
Or, or, I mean, I mean, who had access to that presentation? Because I think we, we weren't all given copies of it. So as far as I know, Steve was the only one who had a copy of it. Now, Steve may have shared it to other people, but I don't know.
But if he did, then that would be a breach.
So this is where I think Steve should do, do an investigation and see that. If, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was responding to Mr. Phelps' question about whether that would be a breach, not if he shared it with members of the commission or, or anybody who needed it, who was privy to the closed session. You can share it within the closed session, and so.
To the people that were at the closed session?
Yes, yes.
I understand that point. But it made its way out.
Right, correct.
But it doesn't sound like there was a wide distribution, because no one here got it, right?
Now that it has made its way out, can we ask Steve for a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay, and I would like to provide a copy of that presentation, and to, I think we should provide a copy of that presentation to the Fire Department. So, and then I think we should ask the Fire Department to come in and give their side of the story. I think all of us have been wondering, because we haven't heard the other side of the story. So I think we need to get the other side, and we can ask the Fire Department if they want that to be in closed session or open session after they've reviewed the PowerPoint presentation to see what we're gonna be talking about. That's what I would like to see done.
I have it written down. Another that I didn't, I didn't share with you is there. Before the, the August 10th Fire Commission meeting, I, I found it alarming that police were requested to be at that meeting. We've had civil meetings before, people have been ushered out because we go into closed session or whatever the case is. But I, I think even with the five municipalities here, we were civil. But yet, upon me doing an op, or, or an open record request was put out, and it's showing here that Mr. Paul Blount requested an officer to stand by the Fire and EMS Commission meeting at 6:30 PM tomorrow night, August 10th, at the Oakland Town Hall. Now, that's not so bad in itself, right? He's concerned, but here's the, the part that bothers me. Members of the news media plan to attend along with the opposing sides of heated, of a heated issue. At the previous meeting at the Village of Cambridge, our village here, deputies had to escort out volunteer firefighters that became uncooperative. I don't recall that happening. That is a blatant lie. I don't recall officers having to usher out people at any of our meetings. Has that happened?
No, he was talking with them, just out there. He didn't usher them out, he was having a civil conversation.
So this is, this is Paul, an email, and I can share it with Lisa, the administrator, so she can give you copies of it. But to me, this is the kind of thing that is causing the division between, you know, between Fire and EMS. These kind of requests for police there because we're, you know, uncooperative. I don't see that happening. So I, I wanted to share that with you and reflect on transparenciness.
There wasn't anybody being ushered out at our meeting?
Yeah, I can pass this around if anybody would like to.
There was a, there was a civil conversation, just as you said, Eric. And they, they actually walked themselves out into the hallway, and it wasn't a, well, you need to leave. There was a, there was a civil conversation, just as you said, Eric, and they, they actually walked themselves out into the hallway, and it wasn't a, well, you need to leave because you're being unruly. No, they were talking and walking out the door, not ushered, so, yeah.
If anybody would like to see that, open records, it's up here, and I'll provide a copy, okay? Any other questions, concerns? We have a meeting forthcoming.
You know what the timing, you know what the timing is for the three or four, or ten proposals?
I'm hearing next month, I don't have a specific date, I haven't told a specific date.
Yeah, I'm just curious, if it's months or weeks or days.
I think NBC News reported that it would be like.
An ongoing.
Well, the three, that the three.
Options.
Options were going to be presented like within a month.
Right.
Then that must be right.
Well, they seem to be, they seem to have more information than, than, than I did, so, or we do, from the commission itself.
And we're getting some financials soon from, I don't know, they hired a CPA firm or something, is there, was there an update on that?
If you, in the video, it states that the commission had hired a firm to take a look at it, and I asked the question during the video.
But I think that was a request from us, that we required that as part, you know.
I said, is this an audit, and from Mr. Cook stated that he sees it as an audit.
But is there timing on when, whatever, we're going to get financial reporting?
But, but here's the thing, we should be able to be getting quarterly financial reports from them that are separate from the audit. We shouldn't have to have that audit before we get, I mean, Tammy gives us financial reports every month.
Yeah.
Let us.
No, the Fire Commission should give us the same thing.
That's why I'm asking.
I know, it's crazy, it's just crazy to me.
So now that we have a new Secretary Treasurer, she has gotten the, the box that you left for Mark, and she's trying to whittle through the finances, I know that she's working with trying to get access through the bank, but then that, that, that presents some problems too, because we have to make a motion to, to take Mark off and bring her on. And that has to happen during a board meeting, so you can just give that copy to Tam.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, let's move on, correspondence, doesn't look like we have anything, nothing to do there. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items.
I have an agenda item that I would like to bring forward.
Okay.
Has to do with LBK Park, doing some investigating and asking questions. There was a park impact fee that was waived by the commission up here. Previous board, and I would like to kind of know why and how that all transpired, and.
Need a copy of the developers agreement for that.
Well, and I, I actually know the answer to that.
Okay, I got, I got more.
Okay, but it's just, we'll, we'll get it on there as a, as an agenda item.
And then the other thing is that the breakdown of LBK Park, who maintains it, who owns it, and why are the residents only of the vineyards trying to raise funds for getting a playground? And who supplies the liability insurance? I need all that so I can bring it to my HOA, I don't know if everybody, I don't, I don't know if everybody knows that, because.
Your HOA was at the Public Works meeting.
I know, but.
We're just.
Things aren't communicated well, so I want to bring it as an agenda item, so it can actually be out in the public, and maybe the public can then help fundraise and not just one little area of the, of the village. So that, that's the whole purpose.
Can you email me everything you want to know?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
I have an item.
Yes?
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 you didn't.
Okay.
I, I just, I know Mark wants to wrap this up, so I want to get in.
I apologize.
Got cake waiting for him.
The welcome signs, welcome signs. So I would like to get an update on where we are with those.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, anything else that we have? What, how soon do you expect to have the auditors complete the work and be ready to wrap that up?
Hopefully sometime in September.
All right.
September, maybe.
Okay.
But, I mean, the audit is separate from like budgeting kind of, and all of that kind of stuff, so they're really two different things.
Getting all the field work done and everything by the end of this month, and then they'll put the whole thing together.
Okay.
Hopefully not too long after that, yeah.
All right. Anything else for future agenda items? Okay, upcoming meetings, September 11th is planned, Commission 12th, the Joint Law Enforcement, 12th is also the Village Board, 13th, Library Board, the 19th, Water and Sewer, the 26th is Village Board, economic development still to be determined, so. All right, that gets us to item 13.
One thing about item 12, sorry, I'm on vacation for the 11th, 12th, I won't be back until the 18th of September, I go on vacation the 7th of September. So the meetings that you have listed that I'm on, I will not be here to make.
Okay.
Officially excused.
But you'll be back for the 26th.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, so 13th, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.